Good morning. We will call to order today's Board of Commissioners meeting. I'd like everybody to stand for the pleasure of legions, please.
Pleasure legions. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation in the ground, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Let me begin by noting that there's a copy of the Open Meetings Act on the north wall of the legislative chambers. Also, there is on the back wall an automatic defibrillator if anybody needs that for health reasons. And if you have a cellphone, I'd ask you to please silence it or put it on mute before we call to order the Board Equalization meeting. I'll turn over to Commissioner Borges.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to mention two things that have come to our attention that we're celebrating. And the first one, which isn't up there yet, but is the National Organization of Disorders for the Corpus Callosum. Larry Store sent this to us and thought it, because it was this week in recognition of this, that it would be nice to mention it in our meetings and down at the legislature today. So, "The Brain Awareness Week is a global campaign to increase public awareness of the progress and benefits of brain research. For one week beginning March 11th, organizations from around the world celebrate the brain with unique programs, events, and messages. The NODCC will conduct a social media campaign primarily on Facebook to share information about the Corpus Callosum, its role in the brain, and the challenges of those living without this important pathway. We invite you to share the content, join the discussion, and help spread the message to help the Corpus Callosum become a household name, that people understand the role of the Corpus Callosum and more acceptance and awareness we can create for this disorder." The second one was brought to Commissioner Rogers and I's attention yesterday. And the, you can't really read that, but it's the Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority is offering free mammograms. And I just wanted to give you a couple of statistics as to why this is so important and we're very excited for this mobile mammogram clinic to be rolling into our community. About one in eight U.S. women, about 12 percent, will develop invasive breast cancer over the course of her lifetime. In 2019, an estimated 268,600 new cases of invasive breast cancer are expected to be diagnosed in women in the U.S., along with 62,930 new cases of non-invasive breast cancer. About 2,670 new cases of invasive breast cancer are expected to be diagnosed in men in 2019. A man's lifetime risk of breast cancer is about one to one in 183. About 41,760 women in the U.S. are expected to die in 2019 from breast cancer. Though death rates have been decreasing since 1989, women under 50 have experienced larger decreases. These decreases are thought to be the result of treatment advances, early detection through screening, and increased awareness. In women under 45, breast cancer is more common in African-American women than white women. Overall, African-American women are more likely to die of breast cancer. For Asian, Hispanic, and Native American women, the risk of developing and dying from breast cancer is lower. And then finally, as of January 2019, there are more than 3.1 million women with a history of breast cancer in the U.S. This includes women currently being treated and women who have finished their treatment. And so Saturday, March 16th, from 8:00 to 5:00, down at the Hilton Omaha 10-0-1 Cass Street, this mobile clinic will be there to provide mammograms to the community. And so whatever we can do to get the word out, to let folks know that it's there, please help get the word out. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we'll call to order the Board of Equalization meeting. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Borges.
Here.
Commissioner Boyle.
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Here.
Commissioner Duda.
Here.
Commissioner Kraft.
Here.
Commissioner Morgan.
Here.
Mr. Chair.
Here. Item A is approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, February 26, 2019. And item B is call for a meeting and set Tuesday, March 19, 2019, as a date for hearing on certified assessments and corrections. What's the will of the Board? Motion by Commissioner Duda, seconded by Commissioner Boyle. Please vote.
Just a reminder, Commissioner Boyle's vote will not appear on the screen, but he does vote yes, as do the rest of the commissioners. Motion passes.
Item C is citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on Board of Equalization-related items not officially listed on the agenda. Are there any citizens' comments at this time? Say none. We will go to the resolutions. Resolutions D, E, F, and G are there. Note that there is a replacement at your desk for item D on the agenda. What's the will of the Board for those items?
Most approved.
Most approved by Commissioner Boyle, seconded by Commissioner Morgan. Does that include adjournment?
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
I just have one quick question on item G, and I think Mr. Kavanaugh's here from the Treasurer's Office regarding Treasurer's recommendation to deny the application for a vehicle tax-exempt status. I don't have any question about this, but it's an interesting rule, and maybe you could share with us the reasoning behind this.
Morning, Commissioners. Tim Kavanaugh, Treasurer's Office. We recommend denial of this application because the applicant who's asking for this exemption, the vehicle's registered in their own name, and you can't do that. It has to be registered in the nonprofit's name in order to qualify for tax-exempt status. No reflection on the service they provide or the organization, it's just that it is registered in an individual's name. Any questions?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, there's a motion, a second, to approve items D, E, F, G, and adjourned. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
We'll now call to order Douglas County Board of Corrections meeting. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Borges.
Here.
Commissioner Boyle.
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Here.
Commissioner Duda.
Here.
Commissioner Kraft.
Here.
Commissioner Morgan.
Here.
Mr. Chair.
Here. Item one is approval of the minutes of the Board of Corrections meeting held Tuesday, February 12, 2019. What's the will of the Board? Motion by Commissioner Borges, seconded by Commissioner Boyle. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Item two, citizens' comments. This is an opportunity to comment on Board of Corrections-related items not on the agenda today. Is there any citizens' comments? Say none. Item three, Director Myers.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Michael Myers, the Director of the Department of Corrections. You have before you the Board of Corrections report for the month of February. Following the eighth month of the fiscal year, we are over budget. We met with Joe Lorenz recently, and our adjustment to our budget based upon our actual costs for the year will be submitted to you next week for your approval. On a positive budgetary note, we are still tracking ahead of our revenue projections for the fiscal year. Enclosure number two, community corrections. Eleven individuals were housed in the sanctioned center in February for a total of 55 days. We had another 11 individuals who were housed in the Transitional Discharge Center for a total of 44 bed days. Just a reminder, those are two new approaches that we've started in recent months to attempt to divert some of the population from the secure jail over to the work release center. The Department of Corrections scheduled its second-ever GED graduation ceremony, that actually happened last Friday. It was a very, very touching event, a lot of great accomplishments. The families were very, very grateful for us giving them that opportunity. Thank you to Commissioner Boyle for his presence and speaking to the graduates. They, several of them and the family members approached me afterwards to express their gratitude to you.
Graduated, huh?
There were nine that were present, but there were actually additional ones that, you know, were unable to attend. So, there were nine graduates present, so it was a very, a very good deal for us. To further development of recovery or addiction services in the jail, we are collaborating with the Community Mental Health Center on writing a federal grant through the SAMPA administration to basically replicate an intensive outpatient treatment program that we have in community corrections inside of the jail. It is our hope to have that program, to eventually have one, two programs, one for men and one for women, operating inside of the jail. And whether we, whether this grant application is successful or not, it is our intent, we will continue to develop services around substance abuse in the jail as well. This is just a vehicle to ramp it up much more robustly and much more quickly. 24/7 sobriety had 47 admissions in February. There were 2,611 breath tests. We did, as you know, our weather was quite challenging in February, so we did have several incidences where we did have to cancel testing, just in the interest of safety. Seven tests were positive for alcohol use, there were zero no-shows, and a very good month for compliance for breath testing at 98, 99.8 percent. Thirty-two individuals were monitored for a total of 755 scram days of monitoring. There were zero no-shows, zero tampering, and two alcohol violations. Again, that compliance rate was also 99.8 percent. There were 321 saliva drug tests administered, eight positive tests, and there were five no-shows. We had 11 drug testing patches that were submitted for testing, and there were three violations. Work release admitted 27 individuals in February. House arrest admitted 58. The Reentry Assistance Program admitted 14. Fifty individuals were admitted to programs in the jail during February. And the Universal Peace Foundation of North America began offering yoga services to men and women in the jail in February, following up on a pilot that we ran with that organization last year. Ten individuals were referred to priority prosecution, 75 bed days were saved, 221 individuals were placed on pre-trial release, and in total, 1,145 individuals were monitored on pre-trial release with a 92 percent compliance rate. We are in the midst of collecting our second year of data collection for our audit cycle for ACA, and we will have our second-ever PRIA audit the first week of May. And PRIA, for those who are unfamiliar with the acronym, is the Prison Rape Elimination Act. Interviews are ongoing for new correctional officers. I'm sorry, I'm moving on to enclosure number four personnel. The next class of officers actually began yesterday. This class ended up being a little smaller than what we projected a few weeks ago for a variety of reasons. When that became clear to me, I knew that we needed to continue to adapt and respond. So we, I challenged the training department to come up with a scenario where they could run overlapping training classes. They've accepted that challenge. We'll have a second class to begin in early April. Basically, how they will do that is week four, five of the first of the class that started yesterday's curriculum will be week one for the class that will join them in April. It's very important to me that we give relief to our officers who've been subjected to basically years now of mandatory overtime. So, we're going to continue to try to refine our efforts of recruiting and hiring and accelerate that process, and then continue to beef up our efforts to keep folks once we have them. I'd like to congratulate Heather Yostin, who was promoted to the rank of Sergeant in February, and we wish Sergeant Samuel Ross the best as he retired in February. We started a new staff mentoring, new officer mentoring and development program with the last class that graduated, they hit the floors in January, and it's a little early for me to call it a success yet, but the early indications, both verbally and the data, are very promising. 100 percent of those officers are still employed, they've been working on their own now for a couple of months. They meet with a mentoring officer twice a week, they meet with their sergeant about on a weekly basis. We're going to continue that focus and expand that program to improve upon the, excuse me, that our retention that, for new officers, which wasn't very encouraging in 2018. To get off this sort of hamster wheel of constantly hiring and replacing people, that's really where our focus needs to be, is making sure that we do a good job of developing those officers and getting them the skills and support that they need to maintain their employment in a new and challenging profession for them. Also, in an effort to continue to instill a stronger sense of welcoming and support to newer officers, I've directed that all lieutenants will attend New Hire, the New Hire Academy at one point or another, introducing themselves, getting to know the new recruits as they go through training. The more familiar faces and support that those new officers can get throughout the ranks, I think will be critical to improving that goal of staff retention. Moving on to enclosure number five, population. A little bit of good news for February, partially maybe also related to the poor weather that we, that we all endured. If there is any silver lining in that, it's that fewer people tend to come to jail during bad weather. We had 1,281 admissions in February, which is probably over 400 less than we had the previous month, to put that into perspective. We released 1,320. Our high count was 1,293, our low count was 1,242. Our average daily population was 1,267, which is approximately 35 less than we had the previous month. Custodial sanctioned bed days were 311. The U.S. Marshal population increased a little bit, the ICE population decreased slightly, the felony pre-trial population decreased, the misdemeanor pre-trial population decreased, and the female population decreased somewhat, but we still maintained three or four housing units open for females based upon how many were there on any given day during the month. Enclosure number six, medical. We had 1,459 screenings, there were 520 physical and health assessments. Enclosure number seven, mental health. There were 151 initial psychiatric appointments, there were 221 mental health assessments. You will see, probably especially those mental health assessments, those numbers trend upward as we engage in the new contract, there are additional resources placed towards mental health, so there, I would expect to see more activity, given that there's a couple of more mental health practitioners on staff. There were 53 mental health infirmary placements, referrals to the Board of Mental Health, there were four, and there were two long-term psychiatric facility referrals. Other noteworthy items, although I announced this last month, it officially did happen in February, so I'll recognize it again. Amber Redmond was promoted to Deputy Director in February. Also, Debbie Otwell, this is actually a March item, she assumed the role of Amber's former job of Administrative Services Manager, taking over yesterday. And we had a initial planning session conducted with, to refine our process for selecting staff for specialty positions. We have a lot of unique assignments to carry on the day-to-day business of the jail. There's been a lot of processes that evolved kind of separately over time, which has kind of led to some confusion for some folks, is how, how does some person get into a particular role if they wish to pursue it? So we're working on standardizing that, to have a very fair, clear process that everyone has a shout to pursue if they wish. Couple other things that I failed to put in my report that I want to mention. Chris Sweeney was our accreditation compliance manager. He was elected, it was a national election through the American Correctional Association. He was elected to the Commission on Accreditation, so he will be serving in that role for the next few years for the American Correctional Association, assessing other agencies' applications for accreditation. So congratulations to Chris on that national honor. And Sergeant John Gannett had his 30th anniversary of employment with the Douglas County Department of Corrections. That's a pretty remarkable milestone as well. And I will wrap up my report with a letter that we received. And I get to see a lot of really neat things that our staff do on a regular basis. You know, the jail, you know, by the nature of what we do, we don't always get cast in the most positive light in the community, and I want to make sure that I give, you know, my attempt to provide equal time for the good efforts that people make. And so we received a thank you letter in the mail, and it says follows. Dear Douglas County Department of Corrections, my parents, who are 75 years old, had their first interactions with your department on Monday, February 11, 2019, when they posted bail for a family friend. I just wanted to tell you thank you for being so nice to them and explaining the process of it all. Also, thank you for helping their friend make it to their car okay. It's a process they hope to never have to do again, as it was stressful for them. You all made it bearable and treated them with respect, which I really appreciate. And I won't read the person's name who signed it for their privacy, but, but I see the, get to see those acts of kindness and compassion on a regular basis, and I want to make sure that I note them when they occur. The Commissioners are also aware of an incident that we had this past weekend, some very heroic actions, which I will expound upon more at a future meeting, but very good stuff. With that, any questions?
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. Yes, I want to commend your staff for the prompt action professionalism. In the incident you referenced, please pass along our commendation to them. Just a few quick questions. The Personnel Section that you addressed, I think that's section four, I'm just trying to get kind of some specificity on where we have just been, because we've got a complete 2018 year where there was a lot of activity in personnel. So, to kind of quantify, you know, this ongoing understaffing situation that we have, that's chronic and that you rightly indicate is a problem. In 2018, we had a definite number of mandatory overtime hours. Are you aware what that number?
I am, I would hate to, off the top of my head, give you the number. It was a big number. I'm going to hold off on guessing in the public.
Okay. Because I've heard, this is just anecdotally, and please forward us that information.
I will, yes.
It's, it's in the tens of thousands of hours.
At least that, sir.
Right. And I don't know if that would help us in our deliberations to have some of that laid out in the personnel thing, but it would help me, and I'm going to keep asking if it's not there, you know, because the numbers are as specific as the numbers that we have on our population, and as I presume is easily available. So, if you could, if you could get that overtime number for 2018, I'd appreciate it. Then the same is true of our personnel question. So, you have an authorized complement of how many people? I, I'm not asking you, I'm not trying to put you on the spot. If you don't have it, you know, please send it to me.
Okay.
And then you're currently at another number, I presume it's not exactly the same.
We are, I can tell you, we are 30 officer, with this new higher off, class that just started yesterday.
Right.
We are 30 officers short.
Just so we can get some idea in terms of the annual play-out of this, we, and we've talked about this before, we hired X number of officers in 2018, and Y number of officers left our employment in 2018. So, you know, you take the one number and you subtract the other number, it would be helpful if we had those numbers.
Absolutely. I can tell you, those are numbers that are ingrained in my memory pretty, because that's been a big focus.
Oh, okay.
We hired 104 officers in 2018.
Okay.
There were 89, all told, including retirements and career changes and so forth, that, that left employments. We had a net gain of 15.
Okay.
The troubling stat within that is that we had 47 officers who left in 2018 who worked for us less than a year. And that's the, that's the focus of trying to improve that outcome.
So that 104 figure would be the pool from which about 47 left?
Correct. There may be some, there may not be the exact same, because you'll have carryover from the previous year, but yeah.
Pretty big overlap. Okay. And do you have an authorized strength number that you could share with us?
I can't quote that for you, I believe it's around 370.
Okay.
But I can, I can get that specifically for you.
Kudos on this mentoring class. I think that'll help a lot. I mean, retention is the name of the game here. We're hiring substantially the number that we should hire, we're just not retaining anywhere close to the number that we should retain. So, I, I think that, that's a great step, and I want to congratulate you on. The impact of that on our retention should be fairly, you know, if we're looking at this a year from now, we should be able to see that. So, this population number of, average of 1,267 is still extremely high and seems to be remaining at that. So we're dealing with high population and high turnover. So, that's, that's the crux of the problem. That continues to be a critical problem in corrections.
That's correct, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Boyle.
Okay, the, I had to look at Commissioner LoFong to make sure I have, okay. I want to add two cents to the overtime discussion, and it's one that's, well, I suppose, a little delicate, but.
The union, this is something beyond what, Commissioner Kavanaugh, this is something beyond what our director can, can control. The union contract calls for who gets to work overtime, and many times, most of the time, not many times, all the time, it's an officer of high rank, and so the pay is, rate of pay is exacerbated by that person's rate and then plus. And embarrassingly, the last time I looked at the top 10 salaries in Douglas County, three of them were correction officers. And they're pretty substantial. I'm not saying they're not, they're doing their job, no doubt about it, but it is, if you quote somebody in Washington, it's kind of rigged so that the pay is, is pretty high. And it's, And it's, it's something that I don't think the union is too interested in changing, so I mentioned that. One of the things that I have been concerned about is that I've asked in our facilities that have people who are in trouble, one way or the other, whether it's a psychiatric unit, or whether it's the correction unit, I like to publicize not a lot of information, but at least that the incidents occur, because I always read about or hear about what happens in Tecumseh and all these places, in which they have a lot, a lot of trouble. But we never hear about, I don't think we hear about, except through phone calls, about some, somebody who's been bitten, or some other thing has occurred. And I think to respect the danger of their job, and to give them some respect that we're aware of what's happening, I think we need to do that much more than we do. Matter of fact, I don't think we really do it at all. So we'd like, I don't know if we can add that legally, we ought to do something to, without names, of course. And then the incident that occurred over the weekend is, that's one that really deserves a great deal of attention, because officers stepped in and saved an inmate's life. And, you know, we have trouble over there, where sometimes people die in our facility, and no fault of ours, but that happens. And so then we have this heroic effort that was remarkable, I don't know if, I don't know how I would have done that, and I'm not sure, you know, if I would have come up with a tourniquet like they did, pretty, pretty classy. They're remarkable, and I really hope that we can parade them up here and tell them so, and I know this was maybe what you're thinking. I want to mention something kind of strange that I read the other day about a discovery, and I think it's Johnson &amp; Johnson that's selling it, that they have discovered a, and it is in use now, a nasal spray to combat depression. And there was a fellow that had used it three times and nothing happened, and the fourth time he said it was like the whole world opened up to him. And I, I'd like to us to explore that, to just see if it's, I don't know what it costs or what it is, but it may set some people on some real, real good paths. I think we ought to explore that in the psych unit, and also in corrections, if we can. I'm not sure who would do that, but I'd like to have that done if we can. I also attended, and it was really, I shouldn't say this, it was a little bit, everything was going along fine in, in Washington at this seminar on bail, until the attorney spoke. Oh my God, oh my God. Anyway, it was really impossible to follow, and, you know, he had his own method of graph that had arrows and things pointing everywhere, you know. And when I picked up, I picked up his handout, and it was so worthless, I'm sorry to say, I left it, I should have brought it, so I could just show you, knock you out. There wasn't a bit of white space on it, and it was just like, it was about four sheets on both sides, you know. Anyway, it was about bail. And I asked the question, I did ask the question there, I said, "How do you, how do you protect a judge who gives bail to someone who's maybe a little iffy?" How do you, and we've had those instances. And I brought it up, where we had some, a lot of things fell apart, I'm not going to name names, but there were a lot of things that came apart when that bail was set. And the judge did what is normal under the conditions, but knowing what he knew is, was right, it was correct. But he really got whacked, because the person had killed someone in a car accident, had been drinking, and he was an undocumented person who obviously didn't stick around for his, paid the bail and got the hell out of here, which is what you'd expect him to do. So I'm trying to figure out a way, one of the things I suggested was, what about, what if, what if, and I've said this before, that the judge would sentence a person to the correction facility. And the correction facility has staff, and they have the knowledge, they work with these people, they know, they know them inside and out, they're used to them. They are in a great position to decide what they need. And I, I'd like to see us try that, and I frankly would like to see like a five-person panel. The reason is that if someone pulls a ducakis, which I've referenced in Washington, if someone pulls a ducakis and the guy goes out and rapes and pillages, that we don't have the one person, the judge, to point to, because that chills the judge from doing these things that are in the public interest. If we did it to the facility, the facility bears the burden, and you've got five people making a decision, I think it'd be terrific, but I'd like to pursue that sometime, if it could be done. Finally, on the GED, one of the things that, one of the things I did that was kind of fun, I brought business cards, and I gave each one of the GED graduates my card, and I said, "You're going to need a reference, and it can't be your mom or dad or your uncle, so put me down for a reference, so we'll see what happens." The other thing, I, there's some other needs that I think they have, and I, I don't know if it's housing, possibly, transportation, or if there's some other things, and I'd like to explore that, if you would. Be sure we're giving them a package when they leave here that is also very practical. And I'm not sure what they are, maybe they're all set. But some I have a feeling are not living at home, what do they need, and let's get them, I'd like to see, giving them some help like that, so they're not on their own. And also, Metro Community College has some terrific programs that I think they could slide right into, to tell you the truth. I'm doing too much talking here. I guess that's, that's really what I wanted to bring up, and I, I'm really happy with the work that you're doing, and with Amber, I think that's, you're a great combo, and you had a great dimension. I have heard from the union about you, and they like what you're doing, they like accessibility, they like being included, and I think it makes a difference, I hope it will, although they've been very cooperative in the past, but I think you're on the, definitely on the right track. So, thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner, and I, I obviously am one person, and this is a very large operation, I, I get to stand out front here, but my role is actually very small in the grand scheme of things.
Right.
So I need everybody's input and everybody's participation to make it successful.
I expected you to say that. Thanks.
Commissioner Craft.
Yes, I'm interested in the yoga. Was there good participation, good acceptance?
Yeah, so we did a, a pilot last year where we offered it to veterans, part of treatment, thinking about PTSD and the trauma and so forth, that, as, as a potential intervention for some of those symptoms that they have. It is just started, and it appears to be being very well-received. I can probably give you more information in a month as to how it's going, and, and more specific feedback. Justine Wall, who, who is in charge of getting that up and running, I'll have her come to the next board meeting and provide you an update.
I'd appreciate that, thank you.
Commissioner Morgan.
Well, I talked to you yesterday and thanked you, you know, Mark Foxhall did an excellent job, and you've followed up with excellent communications with all of us, and the job you're doing, Amber, your team. So I'm appreciative of that. At the same time, on that retention matter, I mean, we've talked about the difficulty and what a challenging job this really is there, and we've seen it firsthand, when people are being checked in, when we've been there. And Mike, you've worked closely, very closely with corrections, and, and I know you do your best on the retention. I mean, it's a much, much different vocation, and your people are so, I think they put forth the greatest effort in respect for the people that are there, and we've talked about that. So, I mean, it's just something that's not going to go away. It, it's a tough job. So I thank you for what you try to do, and as you know, all of us on this board are always willing to listen to anything you have to tell as, us, as suggestions, because we want to be as supportive as we can possibly be. But you are in one of the areas of the most challenging jobs, you and your people. So, I thank you for the respect you constantly show to the people.
Thank you.
That unfortunately have to be there in difficult circumstances, so thanks again.
Thank you. And I wanted to say, you know, Commissioner Boyle mentioned about hearing about incidents that occur in other facilities, and they get publicized. You know, oftentimes, we have those things that happen regularly. Oftentimes, it's involving our, our mentally ill population, and for the, our staff oftentimes do not want to press charges, even if they've been assaulted, if they've been bitten, if they've been hit, because they know that that behavior is a manifestation of their illness, and, and not just an independent act of aggression on that person's part. So that, that keeps it out of the news, because there aren't charges that are filed, because our, our staff, you know, sometimes that crosses the line, and, and you do have to press charges, and people have to be held accountable, but oftentimes, they don't, because they realize who they're dealing with and why this behavior occurred. So just another credit to our staff.
Commissioner Moore.
Just to follow up on that, I, and I understand that fully, it, it bothers me a great deal that someone who's suffering from mental illness, and there's, you know, you see that signs in medical facilities, you know, attacking a medical personnel is a felony, you know, well, someone who's having difficulty, and then attacks someone, slap them with a felony, really just sends them right down the tubes. I mean, that's just the end of it. So I do appreciate very much what you're saying, and I knew that was happening. What I am interested in though, is even though when, when we don't press charges, that the injuries are, you know, we're aware that someone got slugged, someone lost a tooth, whatever it is that we, you know, that is publicized, there was an attack, or maybe I'm over-dramatizing this, but we'll see if it works, maybe it won't. And the last thing I wanted to ask you is, we, I talked to Commissioner Rogers about a tour of the facility, and, well, he's going to make the decision when we do it.
Yeah, we talked, he, he's saying we probably, April, he's got a, a cell that should be close to done, in between done, so he can, we can see one that's done with people in it, and one close to being done, so he said he'll give us a, a time in April.
Which Commissioner will be going to lock up? No, I'm just kidding.
Don't ask, Mike.
Ms. LaFong. Mike, you're doing a great job.
Commissioner Borgson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So congratulations again to Amber, and now to Debbie, you've added two great women to your team, and I'm excited to see that actually there's women on your team. So, when we talk about the, on a positive budgetary note, and our revenue is tracking ahead, does that include the revenue that the city owes us that we've been behind on?
It does.
So we are up to date, or are we still?
I know that there's been some payments that were made recently, I, I can't tell you exactly where that stands to the, to the percentage that they're behind, but.
Okay, I'll check with Joe after this, then.
It is an ongoing issue, the issue is not yet completely resolved, but there had been some progress.
Progress, okay, all right, I'll talk, talk with Joe about that. And then the discharge planning, to Commissioner Boyle's point, when we talked about the GED graduates and them leaving our facility, the social workers actually do discharge planning with each individual, actually starting upon booking, to make sure that they are ready and have what they need to have when they leave, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so, and now it's even more intense, because they're up in the mods with them, to kind of do it on a regular basis.
Yep.
And so, again, that discharge planning, to your point, is so important that we're make sure that we're, yeah, that it's going on, and we're leaving them with the tools and resources that they need, so they don't come back.
Good, thanks.
Uh-huh. And then the, on the mental health issue, how many do we currently have today waiting to go to the regional center?
I had an email last week, and if memory serves, there was somewhere around ten or eleven people on the list.
On the waiting list?
For LRC.
Ten or eleven, because I know we have about four in acute hospitals, but I don't know, I didn't know the number for court orders and those waiting, okay, all right. It might be helpful if we coordinate with Brent from the region to include that in our ongoing report, so everybody's up to speed with what those numbers are.
Yep.
I mean, we're constantly working, banging on the door, in trying to get that process moved along, but I think the more we talk about it, and the more we put it out there, that it would be a good thing to have, especially during this report.
It's typically, it is, it's at least a ninety-day wait.
Wait, mhm.
And that's after a fairly lengthy process to get to that point.
Right.
To be, to even be put on the list.
Right, okay. Well, let's maybe talk a little bit further about what we should include, and talk to Patty and Brent about what to include in the report. Thank you. Gert, you're doing a good job?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mike. Appreciate it. They're motion adjourned.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Craft, second by Commissioner Boyle. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
We'll now call the Board of Commissioners meeting, order roll call, please.
Commissioner Borgson.
Here.
Commissioner Boyle. Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Here.
Commissioner Duda.
Here.
Commissioner Craft.
Here.
Commissioner Morgan.
Here.
Mr. Chair.
Here. Item one is minutes and claims, letter A is approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting, held Tuesday, February twenty-sixth, two thousand and nineteen. Item B is approval of the claims submitted for payment and process through Tuesday, March twelfth, two thousand and nineteen. What's the will of the board?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve A and B by Commissioner Craft, second by Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh.
I have a question on one of our checks, fifty-one ninety-five twenty, five-one-nine, five-two-oh, which is a check for one hundred thousand dollars to the Metropolitan Utilities District regarding acquisition cost from the capital improvement budget. We passed a resolution, I, I believe unanimously, on December eighteenth, directing the county attorney and public properties to negotiate an agreement with MUD for the purchase of that block. But since then, I think that the Building Commission has stepped in as the actual purchaser in place of Douglas County, and, so I guess my question would be, the hundred thousand dollar check that Douglas County is writing to MUD for acquisition, how does that play into the purchase, which is now not Douglas County's purchase, but I believe the Building Commission's purchase? Yep? Attorney, attorney, maybe?
Teresa York County Attorney's Office. So, if I may, I'll try to provide a little bit of clarity. Douglas County is purchasing that block from MUD, and then through a separate purchase agreement, the Public Building Commission will be purchasing that same block from Douglas County. And so I, I believe that hundred thousand dollars is the earnest deposit between Douglas County and MUD. That purchase agreement is in place with MUD, and the due diligence going forward towards closing has already begun.
Okay. So, the purchase price, I think that we agreed on in our initial resolution was a six million dollar purchase price, is that correct?
Teresa York, Douglas County, that is correct, plus closing costs, which I don't have a specific figure for those at this time, Commissioner. But yes, six million purchase price plus closing.
Okay. And then, most recently, the Building Commission passed a resolution for, I believe, six-point-two-five million dollars.
Up to.
Six, six million two hundred and fifty thousand to, to reimburse Douglas County for these costs, is that right?
I believe the clarification provided by Commissioner Duda just now was that it's not to exceed or up to that amount, yes.
Okay. So, at the end of the day, Douglas County will own the block, or the Building Commission will own the block?
At the end of the day, the Public Building Commission will, will own the block.
So Douglas County is still currently negotiating the purchase agreement with MUD, is that correct?
We have reached a final on that, and I believe it will be up for consideration before the PBC this Thursday, two days from now.
Okay, I guess my question was, Douglas County has concluded a purchase agreement with MUD, or?
I apologize, I thought you said PBC. So we do have a purchase agreement finalized with MUD, and we've begun the inspection and surveying, and things of that nature, going towards closing.
Okay. So will that agreement come before the board?
No. On December eighteenth, the resolution that this board passed, it authorized the chair and vice, and/or vice chair to sign the purchase agreement with MUD, and Chair Rogers did sign that agreement.
Okay. And do we know when that was concluded?
I don't want to misspeak, I can say that MUD and Douglas County, I recall we signed on different days, but it has been fully executed.
So then, at the Building Commission meeting Thursday of this week?
Yes.
They will do what? What action?
I believe that on Thursday, I have not seen their agenda, but I believe that, I anticipate that they will take up a purchase agreement between Douglas County and the PBC, with that closing set a little bit later than the closing between MUD and Douglas County.
Okay. Will that agreement then come back before the board?
No, this board, when it passed the resolution authorizing the Sixteenth Amendment to the series of bonds that we have with the Public Building Commission, when this board authorized the Sixteenth Amendment, that resolution also authorized the chair or vice chair to execute any and all. all, and I'm paraphrasing, any and all documents necessary to help MUD acquire, excuse me, to help PBC acquire a site. So I don't anticipate that that will come back.
Great. But the net effect is gonna be that Douglas County will be held harmless, will be compensated entirely for our?
The draft of the purchase agreement that I anticipate PBC will take up on Thursday, the purchase price is $6 million plus our closing costs that we expended doing the MUD purchase. So it should get us back to zero.
Thank you.
Hopefully.
Thank you.
There is a motion to second. Please vote.
I'll be it.
I'm sorry, I have one other.
Okay.
This is on a different item J. That's the acceptance of an updated memorandum of understanding between Douglas County Juvenile Assessment Center.
We're not there yet.
Sorry?
Not there yet.
Oh, I thought you were on the consent agenda.
No.
Oh, we're not on the consent agenda?
No, we still gotta approve A and B.
I'm gonna abstaining. It's a building we manage.
Oh, missing claims, sorry.
I'm be abstaining as a building we manage, there's checks in there for me, so I wanted to make that clear.
There is a motion to second for A and B. Please vote.
Commissioner Morgan abstaining, other commissioners voting yes.
Item two is the consent agenda. We have 10 items. What's the will of the board? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. Now, on, I have a couple. Just item J, which is the acceptance of a memorandum of understanding between Douglas County Juvenile Assessment Center and the Sherwood Foundation for the purpose of providing an evaluation of the Juvenile Assessment Center. And I don't know if there's anybody from Juvenile Assessment here, but if there is someone who could address this, a couple of questions. What is the commitment of Douglas County to the Sherwood Foundation relative to the acceptance of these funds, I presume? And then what's the dollar amount of the funds, if anybody knows?
Patrick Bloomingdale County Administrator Sean Kuhn-Fair had to take today and tomorrow off for personal reasons, otherwise she would be here. This is a continuation of the analysis that Category One Consulting has been doing with a committee formed of internal stakeholders to review, analyze the operations of the Jack. This is a continuation of that. There's no money expended by the county. Sherwood's fully funding the assessment by Category One. They're basically, Category One is basically acting as facilitators for this group that's been meeting on a, I think, monthly basis to spend a couple of hours talking about what the Jack does, how has it been effective, how can it, what should it be doing better, what other things should it be doing? So it's just a, kind of like a strategic assessment and planning process. This is just a continuation of that.
And how long has this been going on?
Several months.
Is there, at the end of the period of review, a report that's gonna be presented to the board?
Yes, and there was a report presented on the first phase, it was just recently presented to the board by Category One Consulting. This is the second phase, there will be another report presented to the board by Category One at the end of this phase.
Do we know when that is?
I don't know what the time.
That's on the child new services committee for next Tuesday to be presented about what this stage will be.
Okay. One other question on another item, which is the C, adoption of the scale rates of the Pheasant Point landfill, which has been before us before, and I noticed that Kent Holm is here today from Environmental Services, and if he could just briefly give us a quick overview, this is a pretty important operation of the counties, and I know that Waste Management has been involved with this as well and they're here today.
Okay, Ken, hold on. For the record, since this is being talked about separately, Ken, I'm gonna put you in the rule, so you got five minutes, we'll go through the pros and that, and then you'll go from there, so you on the clock.
All right, no proster. All right, Kent Holm, Environmental Services Director. I have all the slides that I showed you two weeks ago, happy to address any particular things that you'd like to see. I'm gonna skip forward to what is being proposed, and basically, we're taking the per ton over the scale rate that exists right now. We're gonna break that into three components. The rate's gonna be the same up until December 1st of this year, where there'll be a CPI adjustment added to those. We are adding two new rates. One is a transfer station, a transfer station trailer MSW. MSW stands for municipal solid waste. And a transfer station trailer CND salvage site waste. CND is construction demolition debris. So the benefits of those, that changing, changing rate structure, we're gonna get upgraded reporting. It'll allow us to look at the different waste streams a little more specifically and to chart trends and so on. Very importantly, it will help put us on a more level playing field with other regional landfills. And from a county impact, we're gonna see some additional revenue coming in. These are transfer trailer rates that will capture new waste streams coming in. So these are the proposed rates. 2592 is the scale rate right now. Again, we're breaking that down into three components, so that rate will stay the same until December 1st of 2019. And then, these are the two transfer station rates for the MSW municipal solid waste and CND construction demolition debris. And those rates will stay constant through November 30th, 2019. Once we get to, well, this October, I'll bring a resolution in front of you, it will do a CPI, Consumer Price Index, adjustment. And one of the things that will also happen here in 2019 is for two of those initial rates, we're gonna do a CPI adjustment plus add 20 cents to those. There'll be no change to those particular transfer trailer rates for the first year. And then, the following year, we're gonna do another adjustment right there, basically adding another 20 cents to those two particular commercial collection vehicle rates. The transfer station rates would then be subject to the CPI, but that wouldn't happen until October 2020 and would go into effect on December 1st of 2020. And then, the next year, it's just a CPI adjustment that would be done. So that, very briefly, shows what we're proposing. Again, the benefits to the county, we get some good reporting upgrades, it helps to level the playing field with competition from other landfills, and the revenue impact should be positive there for the county as well.
Just one question. The $100,000 that you put there as a county impact for the first two or three years, is that 100,000 per year?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks a lot.
See no question, there's a motion to second. Please vote.
Question about J.
Please.
Just briefly. I'm really pleased about this group assessing the organization, looking to see what they're doing and how they're performing. And I think we have two other, I always call them the alphabet agencies, but we have a couple other alphabet agencies that are in that, the home program and so forth. I would like to see that as well. I mentioned this to Commissioner Rogers and Commissioner Borgeson, that's one of the things I'm real concerned about, that those agencies, those alphabet agencies be up to speed and be producing so that we don't have any gaps in coverage and in our mission. So I'd like to ask if it's possible that we could do the same thing with anyone else who is in a position of diverting young people from the youth center. So I appreciate, just wanna make that comment, and if anybody wants to make a commitment, I'm ready for it. I'm just kidding. But I hope we can do that. Thank you.
And I think a little bit of the commitment for some of them was yesterday, from the presentation that we had with promise, so that started.
I'm sorry.
I said the commitment with some of the others will come through the presentation we had yesterday here with promise.
Okay, good deal.
There's a motion to second. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
So are we, Commissioner Duda?
As they're walking away, I just wanna thank Kent Holm and Waste Management. Couple of months ago, John Christiansen of Abe's Trash, who I know a little bit, called me with what I thought was a legitimate problem. I passed this along to Kent Holm and Waste Management and this is, we got what I think is a great solution in response. They addressed what I thought, I mean, John Christiansen said, boy, do I have to come down to the county board meeting again? It's before my time, the last time he was here. But he's come down ranting and raving before and was threatening to do that again. I said, we've got good staff, you're gonna have to rant and rave. I think we can address your problems in an orderly fashion, and I wanna thank our staff and Waste Management for doing so.
Thank you. We'll move on to recognition and proclamations. Item A is a resolution honoring the career of Sue Mahaffey, a longtime educator and ambassador to Douglas County and the Omaha Sister City Association. I'll read this and ask for action and turn over to Commissioner Craft. Whereas Ms. Sue Mahaffey was an Omaha native and graduate of Omaha Benson High School, and whereas Ms. Mahaffey was a dedicated physical education teacher, coach and supervisor of physical education for more than 30 years in the Omaha Public Schools before retiring. And whereas Ms. Mahaffey, who was often described as the Energizer Bunny, spent nearly 20 years committed to the Omaha Sister Cities Association as a board member and coordinating council director. And whereas Ms. Mahaffey was an incredible advocate for, an ambassador for Douglas County and Omaha, having promoted opportunities and economic possibilities in our community to international students and professionals through the Omaha Sister Cities. And whereas Ms. Mahaffey visited all of the Omaha Sister Cities in Japan, Germany, Lithuania, Ireland, Mexico and China several times, and even hosted international visitors to our community regularly. And whereas Ms. Mahaffey constantly amazed people with her love of life and laughter, her contagious enthusiasm and complete acceptance for everyone. And whereas Ms. Mahaffey was a leader and a diplomat who volunteered countless hours of her time for the benefit of enhancing our community's global awareness, and whereas Ms. Mahaffey passed away on March 8th, 2019, and will be sorely missed, now therefore be resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Douglas County, Nebraska, that this board hereby honors the life of Ms. Sue Mahaffey for her many contributions to the promotion of Douglas County, Omaha and the entire community. With that, I ask for a motion to second.
I so moved.
Motion by Commissioner Craft, second by Commissioner Duda. Commissioner Craft.
Yes. Excuse my voice, it goes in and out.
This is all bad.
You're gonna get the worst of it. Okay, so Sue is going to be laid to rest tomorrow at 11:00 a.m. The, she was so energetic and so responsible for, yes, so for making so much of the communications happen between us and Omaha, City of Omaha and our six sister cities. In lieu of flowers, they asked not to send flowers, but to send donations to the UNO Omaha Women's Athletics or to the Henry Dorley Zoo. And Sue asked one thing for those who attend her funeral. If you attend it, please feel free to wear comfortable clothing and wear color. She liked color. She did not want everyone in black and she lived a life full of color. Some of the things people say about her are just absolutely fantastic. I knew she was loved, but I didn't know how well-loved she was. One person on face, on the Sister City site, for those who don't know what Sister Cities is, it's a relationship where we exchange cultures between the Omaha culture and the culture of our sister cities, Suzoka, Japan, Shalae, Lithuania, Yantai, China, Bronchrig, Germany, Naas, Ireland and Halapa, Mexico. We bring art in for their, from their countries and they exhibited many times at Jocelyn. We were the first time that Riviera, oh, shoot, was allowed to exhibit outside the United States by the Mexican government. It was a fantastic exhibit that they sent to us. They sent a replica of one of the Incan heads, which is down at the zoo. The LB 262, which is visitor money, helped fund the Japanese garden. And a good portion of that was built by Japanese artists who came through and hand-built using ancient tools, the tea chapel and the gate. It's just amazing what we've done with these relationships. Professors, students, scouting, UNO, Creighton University, Sue coordinated all of this. I'd like to read just a paragraph here. Sue Mahaffey wore many hats, but one of those was a Sister City hat with all the flags of the Sister Cities in it, very colorful. By the way, I'm wearing a Bronchrig, Germany tie today. In honor of Sue, it's colorful and it represents Sister Cities. It spoke volumes about who she was. Fun, all-inclusive, bright and a citizen of the world. She was a teacher and a leader. She taught by example and led with joy. She had a unique way of bringing out the best in those around her by cheering their efforts and by lifting them up. On the side, I never heard her speak ill of anyone. I never heard her say a foul word or absolutely nothing derogatory. Everything was positive. Okay. She could and would walk and talk. She could and would talk to anyone she met, even if there was a language difference. Her warmth made people feel comfortable around her and generated friendship all around the world. She got involved in Sister Cities by going as an exchange teacher to Suzoka, Japan, and she was hooked. So there was just tremendous amount of loss for the Sister City organization and hopefully we can find somebody who's got the unbridled energy that she had to continue on. Thank you.
Mr. Morgan?
I wanted to, thank you, Mark, for your comments about her and also mention that she was real active also with the League of Women voters, and they put out an email, you know, about the loss. So, thank you, really a good person.
If I may, that I didn't know. And I've been, Richard Ketchy got me hooked. He told me I had to be at a meeting at 7:30 one morning after I was sworn in for the city council, but before we had our first meeting, and he made sure I attended. And I got hooked. So it's a great organization.
Good. Done.
Okay, there's a motion to second. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Item B is a recognition of the following county employees retired. Mr. Stanley Cruz has retired from the Douglas County Sheriff's Department after 10 years of service. We'd like to thank him for his years of service. With that, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the resolution. Motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Duda. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Item four, citizens' comments. It's an opportunity for citizens to comment on county board-related items that are not officially listed on the agenda. Are there any citizens' comments?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. First, I'd like to mention that this week is Mental Awareness Week, Brain Awareness Week, to be more specific. So I'd like, I believe I sent you all an email about it. There's an organization called the National Organization for Disorders of the Corpus Colosseum. For those of you... For those of you that don't know, that's the center line between the two hemispheres of the brain by which your neurons cross and communicate with the body. Well, these people are a pretty good organization of patients, parents, professionals, educators, scientists, that have studied disorders involving the brain for many, many years, going back before two thousand eight, when I got involved. In fact, they were doing some of the research that people are trying to do in Omaha now with the new machines, duplicating things that have been done before. But anyway, please look that up, N O D C C dot org, and encourage your people that are stakeholders in the various juvenile programs that we have going, studying behavior, to look into the disorders of the brains, as being maybe causes of the disorders and behaviors by which they get suspended, locked up in jail, assessed, et cetera. There's usually a cause to behavior, is what most people say. There's usually a cause to delinquency. We can all disagree with what that is. I would also like to have somebody clarify the rules. As I understand, I cannot comment on item J of the consent agenda or on child and youth services because they're on the agenda. Is that correct?
That's wrong. No, you, you could have commented on the consent agenda item.
I'm sorry?
You could have commented on the consent agenda item. It was an action item, you could have commented on that. If there's, the only thing that can't be commented on is if you make a comment during this period, the Board can't openly discuss it because it's not listed on the agenda item if a topic is not there. So any citizen is open to comment on any item that's on the agenda as an action item.
Well, you need to change some words there.
And I'm not supposed to go now, I'm just clarifying your.
Let's don't argue about it, but please change it. The other thing I want to quick, quickly mention is, I understand that Douglas County is somewhat affiliated with the Durham Museum. And this last week has been Citizenship Week for a lot of things, too. I did go down and see the citizenship display, American Democracy. But I want to read something from one of their handouts. This involves education, stakeholders, citizens, students, and teachers. I also attended a teacher workshop. What I don't like about this was the end part of the exhibit is all about mass demonstrations and voting and voters' rights, not so much about the structure of the government, being a republic rather than a democracy. To give you an example of why it's not per se accurate, they quote here, fulfilling the ideals of American democracy required defining the people and determining the meaning of citizenship, not clearly articulated in the founding fathers' documents. Clarify, not clearly articulated. These unsettled issues were left for future generations. Catch that means next generation means something different to the founding fathers than my generation does. Some basic questions have long been debated by Americans. How diverse should the citizenship be, the citizenry? Do we need to share a common national story? Do we need to even argue that? What are the rights and responsibilities of citizens? Don't we already know that? Don't we already swear to that? My point being, the progressives have changed our constitution from a pocket edition to over three thousand pages because of things like this. The founding fathers didn't care about social justice. They cared about a new nation. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All righty, we'll move on to committees' item discussion. Item A is the finance report. Item one is the budget report. Commissioners Morgan and Boyle.
As presented.
The only thing I'd like to add is that I've asked Joel Lorenz to notify all department heads and elected officials that I'd like to see what their construction plans are for offices and other facilities because sometimes there's some, quite a few things going on that we don't know about that are, come from some source, wherever it is. So I'd like to see that, just, just know, just some more information.
Thank you. Item G is the human resource report. Item one is the weekly personnel report from civil service as submitted. There are no stated items on the legislative issues. Is there anything, wanting somebody to like to, Commissioner Boyle?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have been asked, and I don't know for sure why we haven't had this on the agenda, but LB three oh nine, which is increasing the number of district court judges in Douglas County, is basically on its sailing through the legislature without any comment from us. And we, I'm being asked what's our position on it. And of course, I say that it's an unfunded mandate. And I'm not here to argue the necessity of it, but I'm here to argue the unfunded mandate piece of it. Senator Legrone has an amendment, which I'm trying to find out if it's still up for consideration, where there is a piece, the amendment calls for the state to reimburse the county for the cost of that judge, which includes those unfunded mandates we have of space, general support, the bailiffs, whatever other costs we have as counties when it comes to adding a judge to whatever court it is here in Douglas County. With the space considerations that we have currently, I think it would be prudent for us to say one of two things. One, while we, the necessity again, I'm not arguing, but we need to wait until we have the proper space. Let us get the courthouse expansion done, and we can then talk about adding more. So at that juncture, I think we, we should oppose LB three oh nine as it sits today. The other is to support it with the amendment that the state reimburses us for our cost in adding this judge, which does not take away from the issue of where are we going to put this judge. And the reason I say that is because there have been bills, and one that just passed, regarding property tax. And the state is the first to pass all of these conditions on to local government about what they can and can't do. They cap us, say we have to do this, we have to do that. But yet here, we have bills that are basically passing on to local government and local taxpayers, an unfunded mandate, and we just sit idly by letting it sail through. And we can't do that. I respect the senator who is proposing this, and that's Senator Lathrop. He's a good friend. I've known him for years. He's a great public servant. But we have to take a position. They're asking us, where are we on this? And at this juncture, with the space needs, with the unfunded mandates, with the now things they're doing to us on the property tax piece of things, we have to say no, unless it's that amendment is attached and the state wants to pay for all of the cost and take us off the hook for it, our local taxpayers off the hook for it. And so I think we need to have a discussion about this and decide what we want to do. And I know it's going to be up for hearing today at eleven o'clock, and we need to let our senators know where we are on this issue.
Commissioner Duda.
Thank you, I appreciate your bringing that one up, Commissioner Borgerson. This is very important. The one question that nobody's ever answered is where are we going to put the courtroom? If we get this seventeenth district court judge, we don't have room for a courtroom. We can figure out where to make judges' chambers on the wrong floor, and that's it. We do not have the space for another courtroom over there. I think that asking them to hold off on giving us another judge until we have our courthouse addition built would be appropriate. As I recall, the fiscal note on this one was about two and a quarter million the first year and about one and a quarter million every year thereafter on an ongoing basis, the, the original extra million dollars for building the courtroom, basically. I would be all for asking them to, to hold off on this. I mean, we aren't making much progress at the moment on expanding the courthouse. And if we keep dragging our feet on this forever, I don't know where we will ever put any more courtrooms. So I think, I would support if, if, I mean, I'd be happy to make a motion that, that our stand on three oh nine be that we would ask them to hold off on giving us, giving us any more district court judges until we can expand our courthouse and have room for them. We have nowhere to put them.
Can you tell me how Senator Lathrop voted on LB, I believe it was LB one oh three, the one that affects our ability to raise our taxes?
I think it went through, and Marcos can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it was a forty, maybe not forty-nine, but forty-eight, forty-seven to nothing.
In our own state. In our own state, let, our own local representatives obviously voted for it in most cases, if not all.
Right.
Well, Commissioner Craft, you can make a point. I think it, if you want to clarify, one oh three doesn't inhibit us from doing it. It says you have to put a separate item on. One oh three is the overrun, okay, yeah.
Okay.
Come on.
Okay, yeah, just to clarify, so Marcos C. Martin, in the governmental. So just to clarify, one oh three is that the bill that would require the hearing for, you know, the, I guess we're in, we're as a, I guess generally, we're just calling it, you know, true flat, flat, and, you know, raising the levy. So that's, that's that bill. That's LB one oh three, and it did pass, and it did pass forty-seven, zero, two.
Which one is?
Let me, and I want to clarify too, this is Patrick Blummingdell. So my understanding, and Marcos can correct me if I'm wrong, is that's just, so it's just a public hearing, which means if you're going to raise the levy, you have to, you have to hold a public hearing, which, which, or if the valuation increases, you have to have a public hearing. It really is not a big deal. Because all you do is publish that. The other part of it, my understanding is, is it was not successful, and that was the three percent.
Right, and that's a three percent cap, and that is the constitutional amendment, and that has not been passed yet, and we don't anticipate it to be passed.
Thank you, I misunderstood.
I missed when I said it.
Aha, now I have somebody I can blame. Never pass up that opportunity.
That's right.
Mike doesn't.
You done?
Yes, I'm done.
Commissioner Boyle.
Yes, I wanted to bring up, I got a report from, well, it was held out. It was sent a report about some of the activity of the courts were down. Do you remember that? I passed it on to, I think, to you, Commissioner Borgerson, and also maybe the chair, maybe others, too. And I was curious how that all stacks up. If the volume's down, I know that the county attorney and the public defender have increased workloads substantially, but for some reason, the workload of the judges was apparently down. So I don't know what they used, who said they needed another one. But I, I, one of the things, I've told you that I've done in the past is whenever I always sit in the back at the, I might have the big meeting, the governor comes in, so I stand up, so then I get to yell when I want to yell. And I yell, you know, take over the cost of the justice system, and the place erupts and collapses and everything else. Because if you look at it, it would cover just about, you know, sixty percent of our budget. It would cover, you know, the sheriff's office, the, the jail, the courtrooms, all the rest of the security, all the things that make up the justice system would be, you know, the cost of the public defender, the cost of the county attorney, all of that, you know, would be a state deal. And that, when you really think about it, that's all we're doing. We have state laws that we're enforcing, and we really are a child of the state. So what is the deal? We're not an enemy, you know, we work together on this. The other thing I, I would really like to talk about, this could happen, but it's not politically fun for the governor, is that we take, ask him to stop this distribution of sales tax money, a hundred and eighty million dollars or whatever it is, and we all get checks for nineteen dollars and twelve cents. And also, the corporations all get them, the ones that pay taxes. So, you know, Costco's getting a check from the state of Nebraska, you know, maybe, I don't know, thirty, forty thousand dollars. What does that mean to Costco, not to single them out? I don't even know if that's the right amount. But I used to use Women of the World, but I can't anymore. Anyway, so these corporations are getting this money that I don't want to say they don't need, but it's a windfall in a way. And then all of us are getting, you know, small little checks. We can buy, when I used to smoke, maybe we could buy half a carton of cigarettes with what you get, you know. I would like to see that money instead dedicated into a fund to pay for the operations of, let's say, the county attorney's office or the judges, some portion of it. And I think we ought to ask the governor to do that. I made an appointment, and I wasn't able to keep it because of circumstances. But I made an appointment with the chief of staff for the governor to talk to him about some tax things, and I never followed through. But I do want to do that because these are seeds we need to plant right at the core. And I think that's one thing we ought to be thinking about. So anyway, I bring that up. Those are some things that are practical, but I really appreciate your saying that, what you said, Commissioner Borgerson. I agree with exactly what you're saying. I do think we need to talk to, it shouldn't surprise Senator Lathrop because he is such a good friend. But postpone it to a date certain, maybe that would be the thing to do.
You want to clarify something?
Yes, Commissioner, so, and excuse me, I kind of brought a cold back from DC. The, just to clarify, on LB three oh nine, which, this was the Commissioner Borgerson's bill issue, she's the one that brought, brought this item up. Three oh nine, as it stands right now, it's on select file, so it's on the floor. It's going to have a hearing on the floor. Legrone did refile his amendment. That amendment is AM four seven one, and that amendment would provide the reimbursement, you know, passive way that, that she specified. So all of that is, is completely accurate. So I just, just to let commissioners know, that's, that's where it stands right now, is with that AM four seven one, which has not been adopted, the bill is on the floor, three oh nine, on select file.
And my understa, I'm sorry.
Hold on, allow, come back. Commissioner Kavanaugh.
This bill advanced thirty-five to nothing, and it will advance again. I, I think that the best that we could do, possibly, is support the Legrone request that the, the state assume paying for these demonstrably state employees. I mean, district court judges are not county employees. They work for the state, they report to the Supreme Court, and I think that's an appropriate thing. That said, you know, that's probably the best we can do, and I wouldn't be too confident that that would go forward. The fiscal note on this, if you look at it, is three hundred and eight thousand dollars. And, you know, that covers judges' costs, staff costs, period. Doesn't cover the courtroom costs, doesn't cover the security costs, all the, all the costs that we assume and that would be required to put these judges in a judges' chambers, in a courtroom, and, and staff those things, which are considerably more than three hundred and eight thousand. The idea, I think, would be best approach from the point of view of, we don't have room right now. The Public Building Commission has appropriated funds for a space study of this exact space to propose how we go forward. That hasn't been expended, and it hasn't been conducted. It probably should be before we go through any space expansions. And I, you know, we've talked about this before, why, why we would even entertain going forward with a major annex expansion without the space study being conducted is truly cart before the horse. But if we're looking at this in terms of having any effect, I, I think that, you know, an hour from now, presumably when this bill comes before the legislature, the best we could probably expect is to give our legislative lobbyists the go-ahead to support the Legrone amendment. And if possible, work on something in terms of a timeframe to allow us more time. I think this comes on board in two thousand twenty to address these questions of space and expenditure. So I, I'd support a, a motion that, that says that we support LB three oh nine with the Legrone amendment attached.
You want a clarification?
Yes, Commissioners, right, like Commissioner, Commissioner Kavanaugh stated the, the fiscal note on it, it is, the state is showing a three hundred and eight thousand dollar fiscal impact. That came from the Nebraska Supreme Court. We turned in our fiscal impact, which is right at, let me switch screens here.
Over two million.
A little over two million. Yeah, that would be for the first year. So, yeah, my, my fiscal impact note. So, yeah, my, my fiscal impact note that I turned in was two point two one mil. That's the first mayor, first year, second year, which would be year twenty, twenty twenty-one, and that's a one point two mil. And that was pretty inclusive as many groups as I possibly could, including the sheriff department, district court, public building commission, county attorney, public defender, clerk of the district court, and public properties.
Commissioner Kavanaugh, you want to follow up?
Right. And were we requested for, to, to submit a fiscal impact on this bill by the fiscal office of the legislature?
Yes, I believe we were.
And that doesn't appear anywhere in the fiscal note that's online. Is there some reason that, did we, did we submit that?
Yes, of course, it was submitted.
Yeah, yeah.
So, but the Supreme Court, yeah, I, I, I'm looking at the same thing online, and it looks like only the Supreme Court's information is on there. But yes, it was provided, and it's provided to the legislative fiscal note office, there in, at the Capitol.
Right. And at the beginning of the session, when this was introduced and heard, did, did we appear at that hearing? Did we testify at that hearing? Did we do anything?
Commissioner, to answer your question, the answer is no. The, this, the board did not have a formal position at that point.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Borgeson.
Borgeson.
Then, boy.
Borgeson, but go ahead, because I can't remember what, oh, I was gonna say it's gonna be heard at eleven today. That's, that's what I was gonna add. Yeah.
Commissioner Boyle.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. And thank Commissioner LaFong. This is kind of off the wall, but you know, it really is, I, I don't know what the final plans are, and I should, but what is supposed to be going into the new building? Are we talking about courtrooms? We're talking about county attorneys, the public defender, what's going into the new building? And what bothers me is we're gonna be spending a million dollars doing a courthouse, a courtroom, that I don't know, unless we're leaving, the judge is in that building. I mean, I'm not really sure what, what we're doing. Maybe what we ought to do, this will really make everybody excited, but we should probably, maybe we, we should consider moving the clerk of the district court into the United Way building, and then doing the courtroom in that space. I don't know. But what is the plan? What is the plan for the courthouse as it is? Are we gonna use it for judges and courtrooms, and then have the county attorneys and move the back office, so to speak, into other rooms? I'm not, that's what I kind of thought we were doing, but I don't know the plan.
Wouldn't that be part of the building commission's space plan?
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Who are you asking it to?
I'm done.
You're just making a statement, or?
I'm sorry.
You're just making a statement? Or you asking it to?
Well, I, I was just curious, yeah, I was asking, I was asking really, what is the plan for that, that building, who's in that building, and who's in the new one? And Commissioner LaFong wants to make a comment.
To be fair, though, is that a bill, that's a building commission discussion, I don't know if we can have?
Well, I don't know. I mean, I think the county is gonna, the county is gonna drive that, the county is gonna drive it, though. We're gonna decide who goes where.
Okay, so let me, you all got in line, let me go to Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Borgeson, Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. I, I would like to clarify one more time. Building Commission has done space studies. We've got them on file. We aren't gonna waste our time and money doing another space study when nothing has changed yet. There is no intention of doing a space study at this point. The space study proposed is for after we get the new building going, figure out who's going there, then the building commission says, let's do a space study of who's left and who's best to go into these spaces being vacated. We have no intention of doing another space study now, when nothing has changed. So I, I'm tired of hearing that our timing is off, that we should be doing it now. We're not doing another one until something changes. There's no reason to do one until something changes. Thank you.
Commissioner Borgeson, Kavanaugh, and Craft.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, and I'm glad you clarified that, but to also clarify, from day one, we've talked about juvenile court, county attorney, public defender, and probation going to the new building. We have already had the designs, the conversation with them, the square footage, which everybody's gotten, the budget, which everybody's gotten, so that's that. What Commissioner Duda's talking about is that the building commission then said, well, then we should have a study on what the space for the existing courthouse, our current courthouse, who goes where when we move these other people out. That, to me, is a proper way to proceed, and to proceed with an additional judge at that time versus now.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Okay, well, I mean, there's fundamental disagreement on, do you plan your work and work your plan, or do you work your plan and then plan your work? It would make all the sense of the world to take the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that the building commission has dedicated to a space study and conduct that study before new space is constructed or new things happen, and you can anticipate that new things will happen. The proposals that have been before this board regarding alternatives to the current state of affairs with a courthouse annex, with moving county attorney and public defender and probation, all are forms of space studies. So we know pretty much that things are gonna happen. We know pretty much if we build an annex, what's gonna go into it. There's general agreement on building that annex. Not having a space study before that goes forward is just backwards in the worst possible way. So you can say, as much as you want, that we have no intention to do a space study until we build a building, but no one in the real world operates like that. And the question keeps coming up, like, the building commission hasn't already anticipated this by appropriating the money. The money's there, do the study, act like, you know, you know what you're doing, rather than putting it cart before the horse, not planning anything until we build something, and then plan it backwards, which will, you know, not work well and probably cost us more money. It's just absurd.
Okay, well, we have in the order here, and then we'll try to see where the board's at, to be in the spirit of, this is Commissioner Craft, Duda, and then Morgan, and ask the board what it wants to do. Commissioner Craft.
Yes. Perhaps I'm illusional, but I do think I live in the real world. We did rather recently a very intensive space study, and that was for the juvenile court judge. So we have, and there's no sense spending two hundred and fifty thousand dollars on this study until we have financing and everything in place to start construction, along with the fact that construction will easily take one to two years, or three years. Okay, I just got the finger, three years. That's plenty of time to figure out how we're gonna use the space we're vacating. So to spend two hundred and fifty thousand dollars prior to the need to spend it, because there's something called the cost of money, is, in my opinion, foolish. So perhaps we live in different universes. I will say this, you know, you, you like to beat dead horses. After you finish beating the horse, and you know it's not gonna go anywhere, you should dismount. So, you know, that's just, I don't know what your fascination is with dead horses.
Mr. Duda, then Morgan.
I'll be happy to, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll be happy to get anybody a copy of the latest space studies that we have done, but we've seen ideas of what the new courthouse annex would look like, but we also have very active forces in our own midst, trying to fight it, trying to change it, trying to prevent it, saying, let's do this instead. I have no interest in spending another two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for another space study when we've already got one on the books, until we know what we're doing. To say the space study has to guide us is ridiculous. Politics is guiding us, pure and simple. Space study has very little to do with it. We'll do a space study once this board figures out what we're doing to address our space crunch, and I have no intention of doing another space study until then. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Morgan passes. Are we, what's the action of the board? Is it a?
Motion and a second.
It is?
Commissioner, paraphrasing, but basically Commissioner Duda made a motion to ask the legislator to hold off on LB three oh nine, if you will, and Borgeson seconded.
Okay, I didn't know that was official, so, okay, there's a motion, a second by Commissioner Duda, and seconded by Commissioner Borgeson.
Mr. Chair, if I may, Commissioner, would you mind restating it? Because I know I didn't probably state it correctly.
Mr. Chair, if I, if I may try to state it more accurately, I, I think that our stand would be that we ask the legislature to delay implementation of three zero nine until we have space available.
You got a clarification?
And the, just on the amendment as well, whatever is, whatever the board wishes to do.
Hold on, hold on. So right now, the only thing on the floor is, you gotta clear, you gotta clarify, Mr. Clerk. You gotta, and that is to hold off, to hold off until there's space, basically.
And, and support the amendment. We should have that in there as well. We do support the amendment.
Okay.
Okay, that's.
Yeah, when we, when we do the actual resolution, we'll listen to this part of the meeting to make sure we get exactly what you added.
Good luck.
There's a motion, a second, please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
With that, nothing else? Sorry, Commissioner Boyle?
Yes, I want to take a moment to acknowledge and recognize a distinguished member of county government among us, and that's Commissioner Mary Ann Borgeson, who's now the first vice president of NACO. And she's moving on up, to quote the television show, Move On Up. She's coming on up, and she does have big shoes to fill. Phil, what size do you wear, Chris? Anyway, so I, I'm very excited.
I have to put both my feet in his.
Very excited about what you've done, and what you're doing, and where you're headed, so I really, I offer congratulations to you personally, and I, I feel the, the rest of the board does as well. We're very proud of you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
With that, there's two items for executive session, litigation, and, you got one more? Sorry, go back.
Well, just to, to point a privilege, Mr. Chair.
Please.
During our, our conference in DC, we also have had many discussions here as well about the five G and the broadband expansion of technology. And one of the things that NACO did was they developed a app on your phone called Test It, T-E-S-T-I-T. And what it does is you download that app, and you perform a test to see how fast, where you are, how fast you are downloading in that area. The reason is, is because the only maps that they have in regards to five G were developed through the vendors. And those vendors would do things such as, if I would test right here in this area, and, and I was okay, that would mean that whole zip code is okay. But we know for a fact that that's not the case, because in the state of Maryland, we know that just within zip codes, there's a difference. So NACO took it upon themselves to create this app. It's, and again, alls you have to do is go to the App Store, download it, and what they're doing is gathering this information so that we can provide information as to really, in real time, what, what is going on with the speed. So, anyway, I would encourage everybody, I would encourage our county deputies to download it on their phones, and wherever they are within the county, to just test it as they go along. Again, the more data we have that we can give our national folks to make their argument, the better. So, again, deputies would be a perfect example as they're out and about across the county to help us out with this. So, Mike, I'll help you download it on your phone.
Just gonna say that for remove the phrase.
Exactly.
Okay, with that, there is need for executive session for two items.
Some moves? Can we make a motion?
Yeah. There's a motion to go into executive session by Commissioner Boyle, seconded by Commissioner Duda, and we're going in for litigation and personnel.
Okay.
There's a motion, a second, please vote, and we're going in for litigation and personnel.
Motion passes seven to zero. Motion passes seven to zero.